I'm at my best right here. Where do you snack? Who else provides snacks?
You know, that's a fact. Kelly's doing it right.
Do you ask people to come?
Yeah.
Gotta feed them.
Oh yeah, see, this is the life. It's nice to just, you know, not sit on the floor.
When do you have to sit on the floor?
Every day, all the time with my child.
Oh, okay.
He's in the, you know, he can't walk yet, but he walks and stand up all the time. So it's like you just are his, like, you know, shelf, his support, his ladder, whatever. He's just always been there. Yeah, climb enough.
I'm a couch for my dog.
Oh, that too. And like today. Okay, so on Mondays, Freddie, my son, he goes to my mom's house. He's out with my mom. So like, I usually spend the whole day just on my computer, you know, sitting on the couch. So my dog is like on me the whole day. So the second that my kid gets home, she acts like she hasn't seen me all day. She like, it's like, she's a dachshund. It's apparently a thing with dachshunds. She needs to be like on my face. So it's like she's just constantly like trying to like put her face on my face. Like, I've seen you all day.
They have short memories.
Right. Yes, nice to be loved.
I hope my husband remembers to pick up our dog at daycare. Otherwise, someone would stay the night. I'm sure he'll remember. Well, it's five o'clock, so I'm gonna go ahead and get started. And anybody else who joins us can join us. Like the mayor.
Kelly, it sounds like Kelly's just gonna be a couple minutes late.
Okay, we can hang for a minute. Help yourself to refreshments at the back if you'd like to. This is my second talk today, so I should be really polished, right? Oh, well, thank you. I used to teach. So I'm used to talking to people.
How many years did you teach?
Oh, gosh. I started in 1986.
I didn't mean to make you do math in front of us, but...
Until 2010? I can't do the math right now.
Long enough.
Long enough, yeah.
Long enough.
That's fantastic.
My sister would be ashamed. She's a math teacher.
Is that the one out of Florida?
Yes. She was one of five finalists for Florida Teacher of the Year this year. Yes. She's amazing. My idol.
I thought it was gonna be coffee. I put a little dash of half and half and then I put it in hot water. It was like, oh, that's not it. But I gotta try it.
I love hot chocolate.
For the temperatures out, either way, as the ranchers. I parked over at the community center and dropped some bugs. Just need to recycle these. I was pulling up the recyclers there, running stuff into the gate of bin. And I ran my stuff up with styrofoam. A gentleman comes out, he goes, "Where you going in here?" And I was like, "Yeah, but a guy just pulled up behind me." He's like, "Yeah, but it's past quarter." It's about 10 till. And he didn't get out of his car. Like, if you'd have run over it.
Save it for another day.
Yeah. Well, he didn't have boxes either.
And then by the end, I had sort of grabbed me outside.
So Jennifer Gretchen Baim called me. She said that Adele Whitehead Davis, one of her living relatives is in Pacific Palisades. And Gretchen wanted to know if anything was being done to help them rebuild their library. And I said, "It's a little early yet." I'm a part of discussion groups with librarians from all over the country, but I'm sure we'll hear more later. But they're part of a really big system, LA Public Libraries. Oh my gosh, they have so many branches. Gretchen said she would reach out to her, I don't know if it was her granddaughter or daughter or whatever. She said she's kind of a recluse, so she's not gonna bother.
Any more encouragement we do on DRS?
He's a data engineer. But his wife is traveling all his salary. And so they could be back and forth to different places, but they're in town right now.
He used to work in the house.
I don't know.
Oh, Lincoln Stadium? Yeah, he did.
Things have gone in, it's so hard to tell.
Yeah.
Like, how's...
It'll be a year?
My son is like, I guess he did everything bad. He put the cart before the horse.
It's like, you get a center.
He never met his boss.
Everything will be, you know, just get a delivery via drone or whatever. Well, if you leave your house by the time it's ready, it's wrong.
That won't be good.
Cover around. Literally covering around.
Good. I feel like there was something like about that. Because when our drone traffic, I'm just getting used to it all. Just trying to move the acceptance. So what did you study? Did you have that skill set in question? Even as a brother?
Good idea.
You have so many friends.
So... From high school. So when I went to our state, first I was like, okay. And then I...
It's a choice.
Then I realized, like, oh, this is actually like, not. It's like, not a good job unless you get into prison.
Okay, like, see, one hundred percent, one hundred percent.
Right, so I was like, get the work done. And then I was like, then I decided for a little bit to be a teacher. And I want to teach history. Because I love history. And then I did a, like, summer camp.
So we made...
Where, like, the tools, those ten years, same kids. And I realized, I thought, you know, I mean, you're like, well, I do it, but like, they're so, like, it's so easy to make it happen. Just like, you know, they were... Now, yeah.
That's a healthy fear, I think, to feel real.
Right. It's like, this is a for me.
So I understand.
Then I got a real job. She said that Chris didn't email her, say he wasn't able to make it, right?
Chris and Aaron are not coming, I know.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
Hello. What's up? Get yourself some refreshments if you want, Kelly. Kelly, get yourself some refreshments if you want.
Hot chocolate.
What's up?
Hot chocolate. I know why, I picture you as a toddler.
Yeah, he's got a hot chocolate.
We had friends who were, their youngest was in my last daycare. And she called it chacket. She'd come in every morning and she had a little stove. So she's like, can I have a little chunk of orange? For breakfast, like, every morning. Yeah. And then she would drink her issue, well, my wife did her hair, and then would send pictures to her mother and was like, how long have you been holding still? And she's like, it's chacket. Hot chocolate solves all the ills.
It does. There's something, something about it.
Can I tell you about the oldest person I ever sat and chatted with? She was 107, had just celebrated her birthday. And, no, it's real. And she was recounting, she goes, "I remember in my 90s, when my eyes started to dim a little." But she had like eaten a third of a sheet cake, just burned it a little, and eaten a third of a sheet cake. But we asked her, "What was the secret?" And she's like, "I never drank or smoked a damn in my life, but I drank, I ate chocolate like it was water." That was her secret. I'm like, all right, I'm here for it.
Goals.
And it was a chocolate sheet.
Do you think we're okay to start now?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, good evening, welcome to the Cedar Falls Public Library. Thank you for coming to hear our annual report for FY24. I'm Kelly Stern, the library director, and we have had a great year at CNPL. This is for the, this is gonna be posted on our website afterwards, so there's a little note from me about this year. Nothing that you won't hear today. Just as a review, I included our mission and values statements. Cultivating enduring pathways that inspire, enrich, and captivate the imagination is our mission at the library. So, public libraries, I think I mentioned last year, are pretty much known for collections, programs, and services. We're probably most famous, most people know us, for the Summer Library Program. And that's true in Cedar Falls as well. We use our strategic plan to, to direct us when we're planning programs. We want to respond to what the community would like to learn and experience. So, and we want our programs to be inspiring and empowering and help people to pursue what they're interested in or what they're passionate about. I'm actually skipping over my notes. In case you're interested in FY24, there were 368 library programs for children from birth through sixth grade, and over 9,000 people attended those programs. For young adults, which is seventh to 12th graders, there were 123 programs and 893 attendees. And if you've ever worked with teenagers, you know that that's, those are pretty good numbers because getting teenagers to commit to anything that they don't have to after school is, or on the weekend, you have to plan something pretty engaging. We have a wonderful young adult librarian though. She happens to be in this picture. And she has really developed the most innovative teen programs I've seen at a public library. They do, she's teaching them how to mend their own clothes, like valuable life skills that they'll need after they graduate from school. She's teaching them cooking in our collab using our Charlie Cart. She does a lot of nature-related programs. They were planting trees with the arborist in this picture over here on the left. They were doing something at Hartman, I think, in the picture on the right.
Foraging, I think.
Foraging, yes, and then they did, they made pesto with what they'd foraged in the collab after they were done. She has crafting programs, book clubs, just all kinds of things for young adults to do. And I'm amazed. We also have a, we want some of our programs to help people to be active and to engage with the outdoors and other areas of the community. Our Story Walk is one of the ways that we do that. At Big Woods Lake, you can walk around the lake and read a story at the same time. And it has prompts for doing things as you walk along and a guestbook that you can sign. Yep, Becca plans lots of programs that allow kids opportunities to move. The youth department has also made lots of connections outside of the library and taken our programs outside of the library. Storytimes in the park happened again last summer. I believe this was at the Arboretum or Cattle Congress?
That one's Arboretum.
Arboretum. They had a storytime at the Aquatics Center last summer. At Sturgis Falls in the Children's Tent, they did a storytime. So, we're all over the place.
And then the top one are UNI students from the International Program. And then the bottom one is Molly Birch and Professor Gallivan from Lost Island.
Nice. We get lots of compliments on the programs, so I sprinkled a few of those throughout here as a staff, just because with any job you do with the public, sometimes you only hear from the people who are upset about something. So as an internal, sort of patting ourselves on the back, we have a Google form that dumps into a spreadsheet. So when staff hear a compliment or they see something that inspires them or that uplifts them, they enter it into that database. And we also get emails and phone calls and notes from people that are lovely. So this was somebody who just wanted to say they appreciated storytelling. Programs for adults, we had 139 during FY24 and 1,786 attendees. So adult programs included things like visiting authors. This is Heather Gudenkauf, who's in Iowan on the left. She packs the room, man. She writes thrillers that are so good. She's one of my favorite authors. We have maker programs, crafting, wellness programs. And most recently, somebody from the community pitched the idea of a repair cafe, teaching people how to repair their own appliances and things so that they don't have to put so much into the landfill. And we've heard of that before. They pointed us to a library in a large city they knew of that offers that program. So we have some staff who are exploring, you know, who can we tap into in our community to help people learn how to fix their broken things so that they don't have to throw them away? So maybe coming in FY25 yet, FY26. This is one of the maker programs. People made book bricks. So over on the left is the book that the patron was inspired by. And on the right, that's a brick that they painted to look like it. So they can use it in their garden or whatever. That was a sound bath program outdoors. As you know, we got branded recently. And that was paid for by the Robert and Shirley Berg Fund in the, I'm sorry, the Ray Fund in the Cedar Falls Community Foundation. And so we've been working on brand recognition in the community, and Fable has made lots of public appearances to help with that. So this is a photo with, is this Casey or?
That's TK.
TK, from UNI at the Summer Fest program this last summer. Fable was also at National Night Out with all those other mascots at Public Safety and has appeared in the parade, Sturgis Falls Parade. Staff said that kids are already recognizing Fable. And when Fable walked by during the parade, kids were yelling, "Fable, Fable." So it's working. Becca initiated a You Found Fable program so that there are Fable plushies that are located in Cedar Falls businesses. And there's one hidden in the library every day. And if you find Fable in one of the businesses, you scan the QR code and then you can come to the library and get an I Found Fable sticker.
How did you get this?
Well, one of the businesses is mostly just the little thing that says We Found Fable because the plushies were expensive. It was a company called Everlyken. And so I gave them a picture of our mascot and the various poses that we have. And then we were to try and come up with a plushie that I liked. And they gave me different fabric samples. And then the Community Foundation, like our branding fund, paid for a part of the brand recognition project. And if you want one, you can purchase one in the book note for $10.
Even though they cost 20 to make.
I was gonna say, they only cost...
It's about marketing.
It's about marketing.
If you're interested in stats, just about everything went up this year from last year. We have more cardholders than last year. Even public computer uses, which you would think would go down as people use their devices more and our Wi-Fi, but no. Wi-Fi uses went up a little bit. Visits made a jump. Meeting rooms is the only thing that went down a little bit. But that's a lot. I mean, that's more than one a day. Number of programs went up a little bit and program attendees went up a little bit this year. I have a five-year comparison later. If you're interested in our collections, about 72% of our collection is still print books. And then 10% video, 4.6% audio, 12% e-materials, and 1% others. So library of things, seed library, stuff like that. Circulation also went up a little bit. E-material circulation has gone up this year in particular. And total physical circulation still accounts for about 75%, 25% of other stuff. If you're interested in circulation by age group, children and families account for 59.3% of what circulates here. Adults, only 34.6, and young adults, 6.2. So families with children are the bread and butter of public libraries because children don't come alone, right? And here's a five-year comparison for you. I did some percentages. So visits to the library were up 10.8% this year from last year. Circulation of books is only up 1%. Circulation of e-resources is up 17%. So if you are a Hoopla fan, if you use your library card to download from Hoopla, lately you've probably been getting a message that says we've already hit our daily dollar limit and to try again tomorrow. If you like Hoopla, try again. If you're still up at midnight, try at midnight because it resets our daily limit at midnight or early in the morning if you can. We're going to see if there's some money we can move from another materials line to increase our Hoopla limit so that people aren't getting frustrated so much by it. Libby continues to be popular as well. And that doesn't have a daily limit, but the holds list can get a little long for the really, really popular stuff. Program attendance is up 3.5%. Public computer use was up 20%. That's the one that baffles me. Maybe part of it has to do with the tech help, though, that the reference department is doing, and I'll talk about that in a minute. And total collection use is up 2.7%. So this is good. It means that people are coming back. You know, COVID had a huge impact on our numbers, more so on the door count than on the circulation of materials. The new trend was that people would come less often, but they would check out more while they were here because those numbers didn't go down equally. But the numbers are steadily climbing back up, which is encouraging. Picture of our operating income, most of it comes from the city's general fund. Library levy is no more, but that's how much came from that. We get a little bit from the county and a little bit from the state of Iowa. The Iowa, state of Iowa money comes for, partially for being a Tier 3 accredited library, which we want to maintain. And part of it is reimbursements for interlibrary loans and open access. So loaning to people outside of our service area. And then we do get some gifts and endowments and so forth. We apply for grants. The Guernsey Charitable Foundation has funded the Cedar Valley's Youth Re-5th Grade Author Visit Program several times over the years. And we get requests periodically as well.
Hey Kelly, before you move back, the mayor may want to take a look at that Bob picture.
Oh, yes.
Hannah may have laughed a little, right?
The picture on the right, thank you for pointing that out. The picture on the right is from Summer Fest last year slash the library's 20th birthday party slash Fable's first birthday. And the mayor was having fun in the phone party with the kids, so. I included that because it was funded by the foundation. Oh, and I forgot to mention, I was supposed to mention this before I started talking. This is being recorded, by the way, just so you know. So what do we spend the money on? Most of it is for staff costs. About 17.5 was for collection and then 16.9 for other things, which included utilities, maintenance, supplies, and all that kind of fun stuff. Couple more compliments. I included this one because this is what I hear most often lately. In fact, I talked to a PEO group at 1:30 today. And at the end of my talk to them, someone raised her hand and said, "I just so much appreciate the help that I've been getting from your reference staff to make a new email account since I'm losing my CFU." And the reference staff are, they're so good at this. They're so patient with people. They take people where they are. They may not even know how to download things from their emails. It might be a challenge even to send an attachment, for example. So some people feel overwhelmed by the idea of creating a new account and transferring things from their old account. And reference staff have been really great about helping people to do that.
If I can just speak to that group.
Yeah.
I know I've gotten emails from residents specifically about we concerned about losing and being able to go to this as a way to help people address it, it's been a huge help. Because it is for a lot of people. It's had CFU email since 1990.
And I know our reference staff have worked with CFU. They did one off-site location help session together. And I know they've talked about coordinating their efforts so that CFU is off. so that CFU is offering some and library staff are offering some. We have a lot of great support at CFPL. This is our, part of our Friends Board. And the Cedar Falls Community Foundation obviously is a great help to us because, you know, besides the staff and the infrastructure, all of the funds for programs come from other places, including our friends of the library who support our regular programming to the tune of about $30,000 a year. And when they have really good years, they put the extra that they can't keep in reserve in the Cedar Falls Community Foundation for the benefit of the library later. And I'm going to talk about a project that they're paying for in just a minute. We couldn't do what we do without our Friends. When I was the youth librarian, I had somebody tell me one day, "I don't want my tax dollars paying for crayons." And I said, "Well, actually, they don't. Our Friends pay for that." And just a quick update about Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, which is the project that the seven Black Hawk County Public Libraries are doing together as a collaborative effort. We currently have 2,637 children under the age of five registered and receiving books every month in the mail with their name on the mailing label. We have 1,220 children who have graduated out of the program because they turned five. And since the project began in June of 2022 when we opened up registration, 68,825 books have been delivered to Black Hawk County children under five. And we couldn't do that without the help of a lot of organizations and individuals. Just this Christmas, the Finance and Business Operations Department chose this project as their end-of-the-year given project and so they contributed toward it as well. It takes individuals and grantors and, in fact, I have a grant deadline tomorrow to the Northeast Iowa Foundation. We're going to keep it going just as long as we can, as long as people will keep funding it. And no donation is too small. What's next for us? We're getting a music garden outside. So if you've never seen a music garden, there are these beautiful art pieces that also happen to be musical instruments. So we're getting a xylophone and this is the nature-inspired collection. I think there are six different pieces that we're getting. They'll go in the green space. Okay, which direction am I facing? The green space along State Street by the bench that's out there. That's where that's going. And that'll be installed sometime this spring, early summer, when it's warm enough to do that. Public Works, I believe, already has it in storage until it can be installed. We're finally getting our automated materials handler replaced. That was a long process to get approval, to get that started. The company that is doing that, Linxo, they are actually installing it in March, which is a little earlier than we thought. And that'll be great. That's the little sorter thing. So if you come to the library and you don't want to come inside, you can feed your items into that opening on the front of the library and it goes over a, what's that called? Conveyor bill and gets sorted. We're updating the library's strategic plan this year, making another five-year plan. We already had one focus group with our state library consultant from the northeast area. And we're going to follow up with a survey that just anybody can fill out who wants to provide information to us about what they'd like. We're going to continue to expand our partnerships. I had some specifically I wanted to mention. One of the more innovative new ones is Becca. The youth librarian has partnered with Allen Women's Health for a prenatal program, one of those Read to the Bump programs. So women who go to Allen Women's Health can sign up for this program. They get a book when they register. They get tips and they're encouraged to read to their bump until the baby's born and then they get another book at the end of the program as well, so. And we are also continuing to anticipate and be responsive to the needs of the community. And the tech help for CFU customers who are losing their email is an example of that. In addition to using the data from the strategic plan, we also try to just, you know, think about what's going on? What do people need these days? What would they appreciate? That's kind of how we brainstorm ideas for what we're going to offer in terms of services and programs. And with the Friends money that's in the Community Foundation, the youth service desk is going to be replaced this year with one that is more accessible. Right now, it doesn't accommodate children in wheelchairs very well. And if two people need to work there, one of them has to stand, which really is not ergonomic. So they're getting a better-designed youth desk paid for entirely by the Friends money. So thank you, Friends. Speaking of the Friends, I meant to mention too, we have over 90 volunteers, including our Friends Board, the library trustees, people who work in the Book Nook downstairs, the Friends bookstore, and people who volunteer at one-time events. And in FY24, they volunteered over 1,200 hours at the library. So we have a lot of support and partners. So, what questions do you have? Yes, great.
What opportunities do you see that might be available in the future? You know, if you could just dream of something that would be really impactful that the library could do or is there a specific need?
Opportunities in terms of?
You talked about the library of today being more things.
Oh, yes.
Than just a storage place or books. Are there things such as having more tools to loan out or?
Good question.
I'm just trying to think things off the top of my head.
I get it.
More outdoor, what kinds of locations?
So our Library of Things collection, which includes garden tools and musical instruments and so forth, right now is pretty space limited to what we can store. Love this building, but it really doesn't have a lot of storage space. So when we want to add something new to the Library of Things, we kind of have to get rid of something that's not being used as much anymore to make room for it. Dreaming, if the sky's the limit and money is no object, we would like to redesign the space so that so that there's more real estate that's on the first floor than on the second floor. For example, our adult fiction section is kind of crowded. And there are empty shelves on the second floor because, you know, reference collections in print have gone down because of what's available on the internet behind a paywall, which is why we provide those services. But it frees up some shelves. But deciding which collection is going to come upstairs then and be less accessible to those, you know, for people who have mobility issues or people who are older and like to stay on the first floor for their fiction, deciding what to move upstairs is kind of difficult. We would love to have a green space. We're really jealous of Cedar Rapids' rooftop garden, which would also be a revenue generator because people can book their rooftop to have their weddings and whatnot. Our green space right now is limited to the raised garden beds that are in front of the library that Dan Meyer uses for seed-saving programs and activities with people who attend his gardening programs. So green space, redesigning the library's space. I know Becca would love to have a larger space. Right now, the tweens, who aren't quite teens yet, the nine to 12s, they have a little corner that's specifically for them. But Becca has a dream that she could have the whole first floor.
Do you ever want to hear me talk about what I would do in the building?
That's okay. I know.
I know you know.
But it would be great to bring a space consultant in and help them or have them help us figure out how we could accomplish what we would like to accomplish with the limited space we have right now.
And with the new strategic plan, that might be something that would come in there.
And then, of course, having a robust budget going forward would be great. Times are what they are. Thank you for that. What else would you like to know?
Kelly, it's not really a question that maybe just, it always amazes me kind of how many hours you actually are open during a week that maybe people don't realize.
Yeah.
I think when you talk about staffing being one of your biggest costs, maybe just, maybe just kind of remind how many hours a week the library's on.
So we're open from, to the public, from 10 to 9 Monday through Wednesday, 9 to 6 Thursday and Friday, 9 to 5 on Saturday and 1 to 5 on Sunday, year-round. It's not just a seasonal thing. So, you know, the reference department, for example, has four employees, two full-time, two part-time, who have to cover all of those open hours. So when somebody goes on vacation or has an illness or an emergency or something, we have to pull from other places to have all of our service desks covered. So yeah, it's a challenge. We would always love more staff. And I, you know, we're losing one of our most talented people this month who is part-time to a full-time position and I completely get it. 100% support their decision to do what's best for them. I just wish we could offer full-time to employees who want it. Because I, you know, I would love it if people could build a career here, but at the same time earn a livable wage and have health insurance, which is what they're looking for, so. Anyway, I'll get off my soapbox. That's on my wish list.
This is literally your soapbox.
You're allowed.
What else would you like to know? Anything? I just really appreciate the support of city employees and council. I'm not as worried about things right now as maybe I have been some years. And council is the reason, so. Library services are so important. And I told you that story last year about why libraries is so important to me. It had a profound effect on my development as a reader and a learner. And I know it does that for other people too, so. I just think it's a great community resource and I want it to be available to people in as great a way as possible, so.
If you come by here during the normal open hours, that parking lot's always full. It's always amazing to me how busy the states are on here because as a young person that doesn't have kids yet, you don't really have much of a reason to come in here very often. But then whenever I come for the events, just to see the amount of people or when I was dropping off those stockings and everything, just when you're in here, you realize how many people really are coming to that and using it. Again, when you're a person that doesn't really use it, it's easy to take that for granted.
Yeah, 10 to noon on storytime days, it's packed. After school on Wednesday afternoons when they get out early out, it's packed. And then we have special programs that people come for. We like it busy. Anything else? I just really appreciate you, so thank you for coming. Help yourself to more food. Oh, we're going to do a tour. If anybody is interested, let me know. I'll take you on a quick tour.
A holiday tour?
Okay. And grab some more food if you want. I assume I can stop the recorder now?